Good evening. Welcome to the October 3rd, I guess it is.
Yes.
October 3rd, City Council Meeting. I call it to order. We have a special guest tonight who's going to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. His name is Nicholas Spears. And Nick, if you'll step out and if everybody will stand up, let's do the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Nick, if you would just come right up to that microphone. You're sporting something other than just a shirt. You have something over your shoulder. Tell us, what'd you do to your arm?
I broke my arm.
You broke it? How'd you break it?
I was running cross-country and I tripped on a route and then fell on it wrong.
So it's athletic-related. Those are always good things to say when you break something. Well, I was competing, you know. So, so we're sorry that your arm is broken, but you get the real cast tomorrow, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Okay, so, Nick, who brought you here tonight?
My mom.
And who is your mom?
Sherri Fletcher.
Sherri Fletcher. Do you know what her title is here?
Communications manager.
Is that close enough, Mom? All right, all right. She's the Director of Marketing and Public Relations? Is that okay?
Uh.
Okay. All right, so your mom works here. And what school do you go to?
Stillwater Middle School.
Stillwater Middle School? So that would put you in what grade?
Sixth grade.
Sixth grade. So where do you go next year?
Uh, Stillwater Middle School.
Oh, okay, so I'm behind a little bit, I guess. All right. So we'll leave Stillwater, yeah, college, right? What's your favorite subject at school?
Science.
Science. And I have a new question that I've added to my rotation here. What do you want to do when you grow up?
I want to be a director and make movies.
You want to be a movie director? You want to make movies? And your favorite genre is? You told me.
Thrillers.
Any kind of thriller. So to scare people or just to get them excited or?
Action.
Action, okay, all right. Well, when you make your first movie, don't forget all of us, okay? And always keep Stillwater as a home residence. Okay, all right. Councillors, any questions? You did a great job. Thank you, but I'll be down there. Okay. So for helping us, you get this little piece of chocolate. There you go. You may give it to your mom so you don't have to hold it? Or you want to hold it up for the picture?
Can I sit down now? That's 27.
Okay, next up is, we have, we have a few proclamations. And Vice Mayor Darlington's going to do the first proclamation on Mental Health Awareness Month. So if you're here for this proclamation, please come forward.
I'm really quite pleased to be able to do this proclamation. Mental health is kind of near and dear to my heart.
Our hearts.
All of our hearts and our brains. All of our brains. Whereas, mental health is part of overall health, and whereas, one in five adults experiences a mental health problem in any given year, and approximately one-half of chronic mental illness begins by the age of 14 and three-quarters by age 24. And whereas, suicide is the 10th leading cause of death in the United States and the second leading cause among young adults, and 90 percent of people who die by suicide have an underlying mental illness. And whereas, long delays, sometimes decades, even often occur between the time symptoms first appear and when individuals get help. And whereas, early identification and treatment can make a difference in successful management of mental illness and recovery. And whereas, it is important to maintain mental health and learn the symptoms of mental illness in order to get help when it is needed. And whereas, every citizen in community can make a difference in helping end the silence and the stigma that for too long has surrounded mental illness and discouraged people from getting help. And whereas, public education and civic activities can encourage mental health and help improve the lives of individuals and families affected by mental illness. Now therefore, I, Pat Darlington, Vice Mayor of the City of Stillwater, Oklahoma, do hereby proclaim the week of October 2nd through October 8th, 2016, as Mental Illness Awareness Week in the City of Stillwater, in order to shine a light on mental illness and fight stigma, provide support, educate the public, and advocate for healthcare and encourage all citizens, businesses, schools, and community organizations to take hashtag stigma-free pledge at www.nami.org/stigma-free in observance of Mental Illness Awareness Week.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. I do have two things to mention related to Mental Health Awareness Month. Tomorrow evening at Mount Zion, Tuesday, October the 4th, at 6 o'clock, they are having a wonderful program that includes music as well as a program. And then on Thursday, the 6th, at OSU Student Union in the French Lounge, there will be a showing from, at 11:30, from 11:30 to 1:00, Minds on the Edge: Facing Mental Illness, a new film screening. So pay attention to those things and pay attention to your own mental health. Yes?
Thank you very much, Dr. Darlington.
Thank you. Get a picture here.
Okay. Our next proclamation is 2016 Fire Prevention Week, and we have Councillor Joyce to do this. And he has some other rock stars that will join him.
I assume the dog is going to come in for this.
Well, that was the rock star, yeah.
Ready to go. I will read this proclamation in, I'll start off. Whereas, fire is a serious public safety concern both locally and nationally, as homes are where people are at the greatest risk from fire, with one-fifth of all homes having smoke alarms that are not working. And whereas, working smoke alarms cut the risk of dying in reported home fires in half, as three out of five home fire deaths result from fires in properties without working smoke alarms, 38 percent, or no working smoke alarms, 21 percent. And whereas, US home fires resulted in 2,745 civilian deaths in 2014, representing the majority of all US fire deaths, as US fire departments responded to 369,500 home fires in 2014, according to the National Fire Protection Association. And whereas, the 2016 Fire Prevention Week theme, "Don't Wake, Don't Wait, Check the Date, Replace Smoke Alarms Every 10 Years," effectively serves to educate the public about the vital importance of replacing the smoke alarms in their homes at least every 10 years, and to determine the age of their smoke alarms by checking the date of manufacture on the back of the alarms. Now therefore, Gina J. Noble, Mayor of the City of Stillwater, does hereby proclaim the week of October 9th through 15th, 2016, as Fire Prevention Week in the city, and urge all citizens to find out how old the smart, smoke alarms are in their homes and to replace them if they are more than 10 years old, and to support and participate in the many public safety activities and efforts of Stillwater's Fire and Emergency Services during Fire Prevention Week 2016. Thank you.
I don't have any more chocolate, I know.
It's Sparky's, when you catnip.
Yeah, it's Will's birthday.
Thank you. Thank you, Sparky. Okay, and we have, we, it's item number C, Recognition of Stillwater Police Department's Citizens Academy graduates. I'm going to ask Mr. McNichol.
Captain Kyle Gibbs will make that presentation.
Okay.
It's hard enough to follow a fireman, but to follow a mascot? I'll do the best I can. We just wrapped up our first Citizens Academy. I think it's the first one we've had in probably 25-plus years in my time here. It was stellar. While I'm talking, I want to play a video. So it's some of the highlights, and I will say this. The video was kind of an afterthought. There's a lot of shooting and a lot of time spent our last day doing scenarios and time at the range, which was great and very valuable. But in hindsight, we wish we'd have taken more pictures and video of the classroom discussions, because we had some very candid discussions. It was a great time and far exceeded my expectations. Hopefully, the volume will be right.
Is this Beverly Hills Cop music?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. The, this Citizens Academy started as part of our Community Outreach Program, the goal of which is to promote positive police interactions with the community we serve. More to the point, this was, this whole Citizens Academy was kind of instigated by Sergeant Paul Pregehl and Lieutenant Dale Higgins. They were, they are the persons that got this started a little over a year ago, and we, it was born of an effort. We really wanted to educate the public about why the police do the things we do. So we started putting it together. We brought in 16 people that were our attendees during the course of the academy. We covered things like department operations, use of force, law enforcement in the media, and just general investigations. Had some great discussions, had a lot of aha moments, where they were giving us that look and bringing up issues we hadn't really thought about that we will incorporate into our next one. But anyway, all that said, I would like to take a moment to just recognize the 16 graduates. And if you would, you don't have to come up, you can just stand up, starting with Tim Arons, Marie Abraham Robinson, Dr. Lee Byrd, Chad Depper Schmidt, Jerry Franklin, Justin Hazard, Rena Hines, Will Joyce, Leon McLendon, Miguel Nahara, Lauren Nahara, Crystal Poor, LeAnn Sims, Stephen Taylor, James Washington, and Karen Washington. Please join me in thanking them for attending and all their performance. Okay, and I think, as I stumble through this, are we going to do the presentation? Okay, I think we have one more piece of this.
To go. What? All right.
Jerry Franklin is the president of Bank First. He was in our class, as I mentioned, and as a result of going through it, he has a few things he would like to say and do.
Be brief, right? That was the admonishment I got when I came up. Mayor, Councillors, thank you for being here and all these distinguished guests. I do have a brief presentation, but I want to tell you how much I enjoyed and respect, respect the officers who put on the Citizens Academy. I wish I could name every single officer that was involved in this, but they all did an outstanding job. But I would like to thank particularly Officers Pregehl, Gibbs, and Higgins, who were with us in every single session, and really took the time and care to explain in great detail the answer to every question that we asked. And believe me, there were many, many questions. And nobody got hurt, which was also a great deal. I was very pleased and privileged to be a part of that very first class. And as we discussed how this class is funded going forward, I felt very, very strongly about providing some support for that. And on behalf of Bank First and all of our crew in Stillwater, I'm providing, I'm presenting a check for $1,000 to help fund this police Citizens Academy on a go-forward basis. So thank you very much for supporting it.
Thank you very much. Mr. Franklin, thank you very much for that generosity. Very much appreciated.
Before we move on, Mayor, I think Rena Hines would like to make one more presentation from the class.
Thank you. On behalf of Class 1 of our Citizens Academy, I think that I speak on behalf of everyone when I say what an amazing experience this has been. The class felt, just as Mr. Franklin said, very strongly that this continue, that it continue with our full support, not only with whatever we can do in the future, but also what we can do monetarily. And so our thanks to the officers, to Stillwater Police Department for having the foresight, being proactive, and bringing this program to the community. We fully support that. But the class of Class 1, Citizens Academy, would like to present to Stillwater Police Department, to the Community Outreach Program. This says $600, but I'm sorry, actually, this is much more. We are matching what Bank First has done, so it will be $1,000. That will bring the total to $2,000 for the Citizens Academy.
Very nice.
I'm going to take a picture outside of everybody. This is from the entire class.
And I guess we aren't invited to that.
We were part of the class.
Oh, I think that you need, you should go, yeah. We won't do anything without you.
You hear that? They won't do anything without us.
It's history, though.
It is history. You really do need to take a picture.
Are we going like that?
Yeah, go ahead.
Are we taking a break? Do you want to?
No, no break. We just won't do anything without you. We have a quorum here. Thank you to everybody.
That's really kind of them, that the officers worked hard in a lot of different fundraising to put the money together to put that class on, beyond the department's budget, with money they had gone out and raised. And it was, it's very kind of both Bank First and the class members to provide that legacy for the future.
I think it goes to show just how important Citizens needs to continue. And I think it's a great, I hope it will continue on every year from now on.
Right.
And that we can have it funded like this. This is very generous.
Especially in these times, what municipalities are going through, so.
Yes. So with that said, and with them taking a picture, we, we can do some business without them on the consent docket.
Unless they want something off.
Well, neither one of them told me they wanted anything off.
Okay.
Do you want me to wait, John?
It's up to you.
Well.
They're taking you by the door.
Okay. You got to tell Councillor Nahara not to dilly-dally. He's got to get back. Oh, he's coming.
He's coming.
They can hear on the TV.
And we're adjourned.
You expected that, right? Did Dan put you up to that?
Do you know when the next Citizens Academy will be?
They, they talked about doing it in the spring next time, because of the fall was kind of hard. So I think maybe spring of '17 or spring of '18, so, but I'm not positive.
Good. Okay. Now that you're back, Consent Docket. Does anyone wish to remove an item? Or is there a motion to approve?
A motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the consent docket. Please vote. And with a vote of five to zero, the consent docket is approved. That takes us to public hearings. And Item A is received. Public comment regarding a request to close a portion of the alley between Stanley and Blakely Streets adjacent to properties addressed at 423-511 South Stanley Street and 410 through 506 South Blakely Street, CC-16-123. Mr. Dorman, did we have good notice on this item?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. McNichol.
Mike Beatty will be providing that report tonight.
All right. Hi, I'm Mike Beatty. Can you get going here? There you go. All right. This is a request to close the alley between Stanley and Blakely Streets along 4th Street. The closing is shown in Pink Hatch, extends all the way from Fifth or Sixth up to 4th Street. A portion was closed in 2012 with the Tuscany Apartments here on Blakely. The applicant's area is highlighted in yellow. The staff went ahead and expanded the request to go all the way to 6th Street to prevent further future abandonment request or closing request, since there's no physical alley there. There is an existing gas line, an electric line, some utilities there we'd have to retain easements over, but no physical alley. This is a street view looking north from 6th Street. And this is from Blakely, looking back to the west, across some of the homes that have already been removed. The alleyway is the area with, with power poles in the, in the distance there. Staff recommendation is to approve the request for closing. Any questions?
Questions, Councillors?
No.
Okay. At this time, I will open the public hearing, but we have nobody to speak on it, so I will close the public hearing. And we'll go back to recommendations, which you just told us, but please repeat yourself.
Well, with this one, since we've kind of expanded beyond the request of the applicant, you have some alternatives. You can close the remainder of the alley, everything that wasn't in red, just as it was presented. Or you can close only a portion of the alley right in that yellow highlighted area that the applicants requested, or you could choose not to close it at all. Those are the options.
And your, your recommendation was?
To go ahead and close all of it. It, there's, it's not being used as a physical alley. It's basically utility easement. So with the request and the pass and this request, and just some, some small portions remaining, made sense to just try to clean that up. We'd still remain, retain easements over all the utilities.
Okay. Councillor Nahara.
Would the applicants not involved notified, I guess? Was there a public hearing, notice being out there?
Yeah, there was notices sent to everybody involved.
Okay.
And there's no, to totally vacate it, they'd have to file in, in District Court to do the vacation.
Okay.
And they would take that step if they wanted to go any farther, but you wouldn't have to act on it again.
Perfect, okay.
Any more questions? Is there a motion?
Motion to accept the approval.
Hey, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve CC-16-123. Please vote. So are we, I'm sorry, are we closing a portion of, because this says a portion.
The actual wording says a portion. So are we closing the whole thing?
Noticed all of it, didn't you?
Yes. But just, I'm just saying, the agenda just says a portion, so I'm just.
It's the notice that he gave to the property owners.
So the whole thing? That's what, I just wanted to make sure.
Okay.
Sorry.
It's okay, thank you.
That's a good catch.
Okay, please vote.
I'm here.
And with a vote of five to zero, CC-16-123 is approved with the vote of five to zero. And that moves us to ordinances on.
Is there a motion?
Motion to accept the approval.
Hey, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve CC-16-123. Please vote.
So are we, I'm sorry, we're closing a portion of, because this says a portion. The actual wording says a portion. So are we closing the whole thing?
Noticed all of it, didn't you?
Yes.
But just, I'm just saying, the agenda just says a portion, so I'm just.
It's the notice that he gave to the property owners.
So the whole thing, that's right. I just wanted to make sure.
Okay.
Sorry.
It's okay. Thank you.
It's a good catch.
Okay, please vote. And with a vote of five to zero, CC-16-123 is approved. That brings us to Item B, receive public input regarding the completion of the 2014 Community Development Block Grant. Request for council acceptance of the 1611114 project and authorization for the mayor to sign the closeout document, CC-16-122. Mr. Dorman, did we have good notice on this item?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. McNichol.
Valerie Silvers will be presenting their report.
Good evening, Mayor, councilors, and management. I'm Valerie Silvers, Grants Coordinator for the City of Stillwater. And I come tonight to close the 2014 CDPG, which is the Lee and Hall Drainage Project, Phase 1. This is located, this is 8th Avenue, and it's on the Hall and Lee Streets, back lot lines from there, the drainage going south from 8th Avenue. This project is funded, the match money is stormwater management money, and the total project was $294,638 for the first 500 feet of it. It's a 1,000-foot project. It had to be split because of the construction costs when they came in. So this is the before pictures. This is very, it holds water, it didn't drain well. It was very habitated with vegetation. There's some other, the water comes through that culvert on 8th Avenue so fast that it's washing out and causing erosion to the property owners, you know, their backyards. There's also sewer lines connections that are above ground in this catchment, so they collect debris and get clogged and messed with a lot. So this is a project that the neighborhood area had wanted for a long time. We were finally able to get that for them. The design engineer on the project was Guy Engineering. Construction was done by Danny Wick Excavation. And the stormwater and the grant money has fully been expended. Phase 2 of this project began in August, just last month, and it is part of the 2015 CDPG grant, and it's $162,000 budgeted for that, $81,000 of each, the match and the grant. This is how it looks today, and I'm standing on 8th Street in this picture here, and it's looking the 500 feet down. You can see the retainage walls and the big boulders that's stopping this high velocity of water coming through there. This drainage comes from way the north part of eastern Stillwater, comes through there in very high quantities. This other one is coming from the other direction. You can see the culvert down here. This is how they're protecting those sewer crossings so that they're not gonna be exposed and catching debris anymore. They put an underdrain in and some turf. They put hydromulch on the sides, so it's looking much nicer now. Are there any questions?
It's amazing the before and after.
Isn't it? I know, I knew you guys would love that.
Absolutely.
I loved it, too.
Yeah, I was expecting like a concrete drainage. That looks really nice.
Very nice.
Thank you.
Very nice. Councilors, any more questions? Okay. At this time, I will open the public hearing, and I will close the public hearing because no one has signed up to speak.
Okay.
Listen to Valerie.
My recommendation is that we close this project and authorize the signature of the closeout documents.
So moved.
So we have a recommendation and a second to authorize to close out the documents. Please vote. And with a vote of five to zero, that has passed, CC-16-122 is approved with a vote of five to zero. That takes us to resolutions. Resolution number CC-2016-28, a resolution authorizing the city manager and general manager to execute certain documents pertaining to depository banks. Mr. Dorman.
This is a simple resolution that basically allows the city manager and, there'll be a companion resolution on SUA, authorizing the general manager to make some adjustments to some funds on deposit. Frankly, there are certificates of deposits and other types of instruments that are at Patriot Bank in Tulsa, Oklahoma, where required to place that money over there as opposed to places where the general fund is deposited under state law. And they wanna make some adjustments to the specific accounts that these are going to be in and to some little higher yielding instruments, and that will allow the manager to do this.
Okay. Questions? Do we have a motion to approve Resolution Number 2016-28?
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve Resolution 2016-28. Please vote. And with a vote of five to zero, Resolution Number 2016-28 is approved with the vote of five to zero. And that moves us to ordinances on first reading. Mr. Dorman.
Ordinance Number 3351, an ordinance amending the Stillwater City Code by amending Chapter 16 Crimes, Miscellaneous Offenses, and Provisions, Article 5, offenses against public authority to create Section 16110, Undemand Aircraft System Defined Prohibitions, Exemptions, Violation, and Declaring an Emergency. This is a request from our emergency management and our public safety divisions. Basically, what they would like to have is the authority to ban the flight of certain unmanned aircraft, i.e. drones, over designated public events. And in particular, they are interested in things like the walk-around and the homecoming parade and perhaps maybe the Christmas parade later on this year. The way the ordinance is set up, unless the council passes a resolution declaring the airspace over that to be off limits, then there's no prohibition. So this is like the narrowest possible way I could write this ordinance, because the federal government is in the process of developing standards for the flying of drones. And in fact, I was in a conference on Friday where they talked about this very thing. But they have left a lot of room for the cities, and the experts that I've tall spoken to say, this one's easy. So we're recommending that you adopt this. There would be a second reading on, I believe, the 17th, and we would ask that you declare an emergency. And there would also be a resolution on file that night for you to consider that would basically ban the flying of those over the walk-around and the homecoming parade. We did have an issue, and part of this is because we did have an issue last year with a drone crashing and almost hitting some people who were participating in that function.
Are there any other events? Is it just up to emergency management as to which events we will?
They'll come to me and basically ask for a resolution, and we would, and you all would have the ability to pass that. It's only when you do the resolution.
Okay.
Because that way, we can, we wanna make sure that there's plenty of notice up front to, so potential users of the drones won't be, you know, using them in proper fashion.
I assume there's an exception for the police or public safety.
Public safety and university officials who would be using it in an official capacity.
Okay.
I think we have a government exception in here. Governmental entity, law enforcement, or fire rescue emergency. So I know OFU has some entities that use those in conjunction with things that the university, for university purposes, it wouldn't ban those.
So like if the university wanted to fly one for market, to take video for marketing purposes, are they gonna be allowed to do that?
Yes. It's the private operators that we don't know anything about that are flying them. There are also people who are operating them who don't have licenses.
Sure.
And I know that the university has a license, and the city-operated units are all operated under FAA-granted licenses. So it's the unlicensed individuals that we're really worried about. And that was the event, the incident that happened last year.
One more question?
Sure.
Ma'am, sorry. Is there any possibility under the ordinance to grant specific permits? You know, if we declare it to be off limits, but then, you know, there's a specific user that we've vetted that wants to, that for some reason wants to use a drone, would that be possible? Or?
It would be possible. The ordinance as written right now doesn't have that provision in it. And if you want me to add some language like that, I could do it before second reading, but you'd only have one reading to examine that. We could always add it after, you know, on a future date if we decide that's something that needs to be done. I fully intend to bring you back a more comprehensive version later, but I needed to get something in the books before this event.
If I may, Mr. Dorman, federal law currently prohibits, would prohibit, in fact, flying over homecoming or the walk-around now because of the size of the parade unless you have a COA commercial license. So I think that would.
There's no way to, the problem is with the federal, as you probably know better than anybody, there are federal laws that govern most of this. In fact, you can't fly a drone within five miles of the airport, so that's most of the town.
You're absolutely correct.
The problem is, there's no one to enforce them. And so the federal government is actually telling the cities, hey, here's your chance. And so a lot of cities are stepping up and doing this. But given the circumstances under which this scenario was set up for me, I, and after hours of discussion, literally with Dennis and some other public safety people, we decided we needed to go with a very narrowly drawn ordinance to start this out. And then if, you know, the situation presents where we need to expand this, or the feds tell us that we need to be doing some different things, then I will certainly come back to you with a revised version. But this is to basically take care of those two events initially, and then we'll work from there.
And so this does protect homecoming this year.
Yes, ma'am. That's the plan, is that if you adopt the emergency, we would arrange to have publication done the next day. Then it would be in effect from that day forward.
Any more discussion? Okay, do, is there a motion?
Motion to advance the second reading.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to advance Ordinance Number 3351 to second reading. Please vote. And it is advanced to second reading with a vote of five to zero. And that takes us to, on second reading, Mr. Dorman.
Ordinance Number 3350, an ordinance rezoning attractive land located at 421 East Thomas Avenue from IL Light Industrial District to CG Commercial General District.
Counselors, discussion.
No.
Is there a motion?
Motion to.
Advance, no, to approve ordinance.
Adopt.
Adopt.
It's one of those A words.
Second.
Second.
I'll second the right one, whichever one was right.
Compose myself.
We'll get it.
We have a motion and a second to adopt Ordinance Number 3350. Please vote. And Ordinance Number 3350 is adopted with a vote of five to zero. That takes us to reports from officers and boards, miscellaneous from the city attorney.
Nothing to report tonight, ma'am.
Miscellaneous from the city manager.
Thank you. I do have an item. Stillwater Regional Airport is asking passengers to fill out a quit survey for the Oklahoma Aeronautics Commission, or the OAC, to gather important annual economic data for the airport and the state. Links to the survey can be found at flystillwateroklahoma.com under the airline info tab. Print versions are at Stillwater Regional Airport Administrative Office at 2020-1 West Airport Road. I would also report to the council that we can officially announce the September flight numbers, and I wish Gary Johnson were here to do that, but we had 3,750 official passengers.
Which is way more than we thought.
Way more than estimated, way ahead of projections. I'm told by our airlines consultant that we're ahead of where Manhattan was when they first started, and their service has been very successful, so.
Manhattan, Kansas.
Manhattan, Manhattan, Kansas, yeah. Yes.
I would say.
Very pleased.
That's not an airport in Manhattan.
That's not a big deal.
Even beyond numbers, though, every person that I have talked to has been very pleased with the service and the efficiency. Everything has just been very.
And they've, things that they've heard, they can't wait to fly if they haven't yet because of what they've heard, so.
Right.
It's just a congratulations and kudos to everybody involved with this, especially Gary Johnson. Other news, Counselor Nahara.
Yes, ma'am. October, oh, wait, this is the day of my talking point. That's not part of the. This Friday will be the last Friday for Food Trucks and Tunes Event of the Season. The theme is pre-game day fun. There will be a life-size checkers game, life-size tic-tac-toe, and plenty of tailgate goodies. The event will be held at Ethan-Husband from 6:00 to 10:00 p.m., and all ages are welcome. And then also, happy birthday, Counselor Joyce.
Thank you.
Happy birthday.
Thank you.
Happy birthday. So do you have any news besides your birthday?
I do. Besides that, yes, I do. It's the first full week of the month, so it's time to put your glass recycling totes out by the curb this week. Yard waste is not picked up during the days that glass is collected, but this is glass week, but not yard waste week.
Okay. Counselor Zanotti.
I do. The City of Stillwater is holding its Fall Household Hazardous Waste Collection Event on Saturday, October 15th, from 8:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. This event is at the City of Stillwater Convenience Collection Center at 807 South Perkins Road. Residents are encouraged to drop off unwanted household pollutants free of charge. For more information on finding out what those actually are, go to stillwater.org.
That's a very convenient service.
It's a great service.
If you have not used it, you should be using it.
Yes.
Vice Mayor.
Yes, I do have something. We are proud. Stillwater is proud to host this year's Oklahoma Arts Conference. That will be October 25th to 26th. This year's theme is navigating new landscapes, and the purpose is to prepare Oklahoma's arts industry for the challenges of an ever-changing landscape. For more information on the event or to register, visit arts.ok.gov. Straightforward.
Very good. Okay, is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adjourn the October 3rd City Council meeting. Please vote. And the meeting is adjourned with a vote of five to zero. That moves us to the Stillwater Utilities Authority Meeting. Trustees, anything on the consent docket you would like to pull?
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the consent docket. Please vote.
I already pushed the button to vote.
And the consent docket is approved with a vote of five to zero. That takes us to resolutions. Resolution Number SUA 2016-7, a resolution authorizing the city manager and general manager to execute certain documents pertaining to depository banks. Mr. Dorman.
This is the same resolution I advised you of just previously.
Okay. And so do we have a motion for this resolution?
Yes.
We have a motion and a second to approve Resolution Number 2016-7. Please vote. And the resolution is passed with a vote of five to zero. Reports from officers and boards, General Counsel.
Nothing to report, ma'am.
General Manager.
Yes, ma'am. I would just like people to know when we have an outage, as we did last Tuesday, with the circumstances of which, other than it was a raccoon that caused the damage, I'll stay away from. And you try to call BLS and you can't get through, that means that there's a high call volume and a high likelihood that we already know about the outage. And we have added an item to the webpage so that if you get on the city website and look, you can follow that outage, because we do have people that are tracking the progress that folks are, Stillwater Electric people are making and getting the power back on.
Great.
So.
That will be very helpful.
Right.
If your computer is charged.
If your computer, your iPhone.
Or your phone, or, yeah, there's always some. Trustees, anything you would like to?
Great job at the groundbreaking, Dan. You're heading back there, but great job of you and Lauren and everyone else and Pat. You did a fantastic job with your speech. It was wonderfully prepared.
Meg Gal.
I mean, that was awesome. You did a great job.
I think that's.
And with that, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adjourn the SUA Stillwater Utilities Authority Meeting on October 3rd. Please vote. And with a five to zero vote, we are adjourned for October 3rd. Thank you for being here. Thank you for watching, and we will see you next time.